United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In a moment of silence? Thank you. Citizen concerns, anything that is not on the agenda that would like to be brought up? All right, move on to item three, the approval of the agenda. I will move approval of the agenda. Motion by Radick, second by Young, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero. Moving on to the consent agenda, items four through nine constitute a consent agenda, routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item four, approval of the minutes of the June 4th, 2019 meeting. Item five, approval of claims. Item six, from Board Administration, approval of lifting tax suspensions for petitioners who failed to recertify their income or income does not qualify for continued tax suspension. Seven A, from Human Resources, approval of memorandum of personnel transactions. Seven B, approve the purchase of cyber liability insurance for FY 19 and 20. Eight A, from Community Economic Development, receive the third quarter report from SEMCO for fiscal year 18 and 19. And eight B, receive the third quarter report from Semmering Corey, Inc. for fiscal year 18 and 19. David, any highlights you wanted to bring up on any of that?
We're, 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 we're making progress on our coffeepots. We have seen this completed and verification, so.
All right. Nine A, from Secondary Roads, consideration of a utility permit for installation of fiber-optic cable in county right-of-way for SDN communication. And nine B, consideration of a utility permit for installation of fiber-optic cable in county rights-of-way for Mid-American Energy. All right, any questions on any of those items? All right, I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Radick, you name the second? No, I'll give it to DeWitt that time. All right, anyone, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero. Moving on to item 10. Seven hundred E seven, five hundred and fifty-nine, general obligation, capital loan note, series 2019. Approval of resolution approving and authorizing form of loan agreement and authorizing and providing for the issuance and levying a tax to pay the note. Approval of the tax exemption certificate, I'll move that. Dennis, did you have anything you want to add?
Second.
This is the final process before the actual close, the plan closing June 28th.
Second.
I got one.
Oh, okay. He must be whispering.
Yeah, he was whispering.
Probably coughed over, I'm sorry. So, motion by Radick, second by Young, any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero. So ours, that time is only on which one, A, B? Move on to eleven C. Eleven C is award one new track-mounted excavator quote from Transource Truck and Equipment for $162,350.
Mark Narrows with Berry County. We took quotes a couple of weeks ago on motor graders and an excavator for replacing the existing track-mounted excavator on, for Odo District. I'm recommending the low bid from Transource Truck and Equipment for a Volvo EC 220 EL, $162,350 with trade on our current machine.
I'll move it. Second. Okay, motion by Potabomb, second by DeWitt. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero. Item D, approve contract and bond for project number LBC 160 with Graves Construction of Spencer, Iowa for $620,679 and 97 cents.
This is for the replacement of the Haskell Avenue Bridge north of Mobile. I recommend an award to Graves Construction of Spencer, Iowa, $620,679 and 97 cents.
I'll move it.
Second.
Motion by Radick, second by DeWitt. Any further questions? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero.
Everything's tapped out there as far as your signature.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 12, Michelle. Approved motion to purchase up to 13 scanners that are compatible with Tyler software.
So I had mentioned the need in a few meetings ago, and we did assess all of the scanners that the department has currently have and checked them to see if they were compatible with Tyler, and we've determined that we need 13 scanners in order for all of the departments to be able to scan their claims into the system. I spoke with Dennis about where we could receive the funding, and he suggested that we wait until July 1st to make those purchases. Average cost around $700 per scanner.
How many vendors did you look at?
I actually have a list of quite a few, but the vendor that I'd like to choose is the one that's currently used in the auditor's office, and we know that it's a reliable scanner. Fajutsu.
I did say wait till CIP for next year, but we do have extra funds in the gaming revenue funds above and beyond what I'd estimated that we'd have as of July 1st. So instead of having them wait, and if they need them, we could take that $9100 gaming revenues. We do have plenty in there covered. That way you don't have to wait.
Thank you, Dennis.
Is that a solid recommendation?
Yes.
Could the work start sooner than?
We go live on accounts payable on the 24th of June, so we just had a meeting and we advise the departments that they're not going to scan until all of them have the scanners in place, so yes, that will allow us to let them go paperless sooner.
Is that your recommendation, Dennis?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll go ahead and make that motion.
Second.
All right, motion by Radick, second by DeWitt, any other questions or discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, can we discuss MURD in two minutes? All right.
I promise I'll walk out after. Dickens Schultz, President, MURD 1015, Tertam Street, Mobile, Iowa. With the new sports gaming legislation, there is a portion in there that involves the QSO, which is MURD, the Qualified Sponsorings Organization, and it requires that we have a member on the board that is non-voting that represents both the Board of Supervisors, one of the Board of Supervisor members, as well as a city council member. We are, the rulemaking is still underway or still ongoing. They don't anticipate the rulemaking by the IRGC until the end of July, but we need to, we are supposed to have someone in place or at least be working towards that by July 1st. So my request is that someone from the County Board of Supervisors volunteer to become a member of the MURD Board as a non-voting member.
So that would require the full FBI background check?
We, we don't know yet about the background checks. So like I said, they're still looking at that. It sounds like we may know by the end of the week regarding the background check, but in, yeah, the, the voting members of the MURD Board have to have a Class A gaming license, which requires a full background check, which is very extensive.
And then, does, is that now covered by MURD, or?
We haven't addressed it, the board member, the current board members are covered.
Okay.
So.
So would an ad hoc then be covered?
Well, we'd have to, it'd have to be, I can't commit to it without going to the board.
Okay. I wouldn't mind doing it if it was covered, because I had done most of the application process in the past, and then, I guess through recommendations from city attorney at the time, didn't pursue it, but.
When are the meetings?
Well, right now, our meetings are Mondays, but they are during the same time as the council meetings, so we are in the process of changing the meeting. And we're also looking at an opportunity for some members, because the change, we usually have this set time of having the possibility of having part of it be electronic, so we can have call-in or web conference, so we're looking into that matter as well.
As long as it's in the afternoons, I could typically do them too, but.
Yeah. We, we actually did, if you're familiar with the web poll, we, we have 18 members currently, and so it's tough to get everybody to agree on a time, and we have a web poll out and we'll determine through consensus the best time and then try and make it work with everybody, whether it be, it'll still be at physical location, but we'll try and make electronic available.
And speaking of set time here, we got to get back to 11A here, so, but.
If you can give me a name sometime, that would be great.
Sounds great.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's all I have, thank you.
So 11A, Secondary Roads, public hearing, public hearing on vacating six county road segments.
We're going to see if we can put this on the screen. I'm not seeing that mouse moving up there. I don't know, tell me. Oh, now it's on. There we go.
It's high-tech, Mark.
Well, it occurred to me that it wasn't on. Okay, I just got to see where the information is here. First thing I'm going to do is try and orient north to the top of the page. This is north of Correctionville, 150th Street would be north of our bridge over the West Fork of the Little Sioux River. You can see the west, or I'm sorry, the Little Sioux River, this isn't the West Fork, this is the Little Sioux River running this way. Correctionville lies southwest, this is 150th Street coming up at the intersection of 150th and 145th, it becomes Preston Boulevard. That continues up into Cherokee County to the north. The worst part of the road here, these two property owners and the homeowners still need access to the property. From this line to the river and across the river is now held in the hands of a single owner. Two years ago, we gave permission to do some alteration back here in repairs after the 2014 flood to allow those fields to be connected. We really have no reason for a road back here anymore now that the property owner has the ownership of all that land, allow him to manage it as he chooses with his farming operation. I'm guessing a certain amount of that road would be eliminated. Gate could be placed here, we'll put our end-of-the-road markers up, you know, and county maintenance, and then it would be up to that landowner to gate the road at that intersection or at that point as he chose. It's a recommendation of the Road Department to close and vacate 145th Street as described in the legal notice. I guess if there's public comment on it, that would be the next item appropriate. I can answer questions also if the board has any additional ones.
So for a public hearing, just type that, come up.
Make statements correct.
Yes, if, if anybody's for or against the vacation, I didn't receive any written or verbal comments.
So I guess anybody for or against the vacation on this, come on up to the microphone, let us know what you think.
Sure have a question for the auditor. Will we have one single public hearing to close, or?
Just one hearing that we're having here?
Uh, one hearing on six items, and then they could take action on the items individually at the conclusion of the hearing.
Okay.
Each of the items should be held, done singly though, so that it is recorded and the.
So the first hearing on 145th, nobody has a comment on 145th?
It'd be my assumption there'd be very little opposition to this again, because it all is in the hands of a single landowner. When I last talked to Fred Lynn, he's the owner, he was in favor of this.
So do we need to close the public hearing on 145th and then move on to the next one? Is that how that?
No, we move on to, we would move on to the next item now.
Let's do that.
Okay, the next portion, one is a portion of Sidney Avenue, and I will bring up and reorient. Sorry, folks, this is a little twitchy. Thought I had it.
You want me to just turn the screen for you?
There we go. There we go. The proposed closure here results from the closing of this bridge. After the 2016 inspection of the Sidney Avenue Bridge, it was determined that it had structural defects that did not allow it to remain in operation. Sidney Avenue is a half-mile road, we have very few of those in the county. Typically, our roads run on the mile section line, this runs up center of section. So we have new bridges on, I believe it's Story Avenue to the west. No, I'm sorry, it's Safford Avenue to the west and Story Avenue to the east, where we have new structures that are fully capable of carrying legal loads. The estimated price to replace the Sidney Avenue Bridge is probably in the neighborhood of $300,000. It's a large enough drainage area that would not be a culvert like the Story Avenue structure that we replaced here a couple of years ago. All of the ownership is held by the two who own the 40 quarters to the north of the stream. The property owners, there is a house that lies to the south. Those, those folks had contacted my office earlier this year. They would like to see the bridge, they had commented they would like to see the bridge reopened. I went too far. See if I can just grab that and move it up. See the home and acreage here lying to the south. Especially during the winter months, that was an easier traverse for them to go north across Story up to 190th. It is a significant expense to the county, one of the reasons that we're bringing this forward to the board for a final determination on whether to retain this road or close it is because you're the final authority on it. The recommendation of the department is, with this being on the half-mile, with the presence of the bridge not affecting access or land-locking anybody, and that's, that's a key issue here. It isn't necessarily the convenient route in and out of a residence, but, or residence or a farm, but it's whether or not we physically land-lock someone. And in this case, property owners on the north side of the bridge are able to access their property off 190th. Property owners on the south side of the bridge can access off of 200th Street or the balance of Sidney Avenue south of the creek. Again, the estimated cost for the replacement structure is around $300,000. It would probably be a small continuous concrete slab bridge to replace the existing bridge that's at that location. Our proposal would be to tear down the bridge, put up road in signs at about this quarter-to-quarter line that's indicated on the proposed vacation. With that, I'll get out of the way. If there's any comments, they can work here.
Come on up, sir.
My name's Rick Davis, I own the quarter to the west there. That field, I need that road to be able to access that small field there. I would like a bridge replaced there, but I do understand that there's, it's cost prohibitive. I was going to put a new home just south of that creek, but since it's been approved to put a hog building right across the road to the north, I'm going to go to Cherokee County and build my home up on a farm I own there, so. But I need access to that field, and if you look at 190th, if we put a approach in there, it's very, very steep. So I don't have a issue with closing the thing, I just need to be able to bring combines and equipment down there to plant that field that's about halfway down that.
Well, you own land on either.
You don't need the whole road, Rick, you just need half. Well, what I need to do is on 190th, coming south, about halfway down or two-thirds of the way down, there's a field approach that's real nice and flat that comes into that small field there, and I need to be able to come off 190th and go down in there and farm that piece there, but I guess the road.
There'd be no issue with us if the board chose to alter it and only close the bridge. The bridge is where the expense is for this road.
Yeah, that would be great with me, too, just so I can get through there. I would come off 190th if they put something in there, but that's going to be too steep to get a combine out of there, so.
So when you vacate a road, do you just own it as a vacated right-of-way?
When a road is vacated, what vacation refers to is the County Board of Supervisors doesn't own the real property interest in the road. The road ownership remains in the hands of the adjacent two landowners. They own to the center line of the road. The county has an exclusive easement for road purposes, and that gives us the use and ability to utilize 66 feet of right-of-way typically for road easements, so.
If we vacate that, he could still use it.
Pardon?
He could still use it.
Well, the problem is that half of the road goes to his neighbor on the other side, who may have entirely different needs or choices there. The neighbor on the other side would have the right to put a fence right down the center of it, which would probably work counter to his need to get in.
Sure.
A combine. Again, we looked at closing the whole road without necessarily looking at what access needs he'd have for something as large as a combine. We could close the road at any point and dead-end it at a field entrance. We have a number of those out there. The savings for the county and the Road Department is in not replacing.
The bridge.
A $300,000 structure. And that's not to say that the board can't choose to do that. You've done that in the past where we've replaced a, a structure, we just bought that one today. But this is one where this road is only a mile long, it's between 190th and 200th. The roads on either side are continuous roads that run from Highway 20 down to D-38 for sure.
But we could just close the bridge.
We can just close the bridge. Again, we proposed the whole thing because typically when we look at this, we're looking at giving that use of that land, and a farmer loses roughly one acre per quarter mile in a 66-foot right-of-way, but I wouldn't have any problem with determining where that point of closure should be with Mr. Davis and, and then.
Right down by the bridge, you know, what my problem is, there's a drainage ditch that comes down and, and that wasn't there, this wouldn't be an issue at all, but there's a drainage ditch from the north side of the road here, so.
Yeah, that dark line that we see that runs parallel to the road.
It's probably a good idea that that bridge is closed if you're not going to replace it.
So we could just close it at the bridge and.
Yes.
Everybody else would find.
Yes.
All right, so Sidney Avenue, that bridge.
I don't know if there were any other comments here.
Any other comments in the room on that? All right, with no other comments, we'll move on to the next one.
This next vacation is 260th Street on the east side of Jasper Avenue. There is no bridge, this is a very similar situation to what we're looking at at Sidney. This road here was closed, I, I didn't bother to look it up, but it was in sometime in the 1980s, 1990s, and it's been out of service since then. There is no need for the county to access and maintain this. The field entrances for these two fields are all the way back here by 260th Street, and we satisfy that need by closing at that quarter line. We allow that, those two farmers to then fence down the middle and utilize that full field. On this side, we've spoken with the landowner to the north, we have a large snow trap in this corner. Both property owners on this side are interested in having these trees removed and that snow trap taken out, which serves us well. We would use the dirt from that corner to fill in this road here. We'd stake the center line for the property owners, they'd both be able to farm their side of the field. At the time, we had a visit with them, which was about two years ago. Sometimes it takes us a while to get to the road vacations, we're usually more busy with construction and they, they sometimes wait. But both property owners were very interested in pursuing this. They won't miss the trees, which affect their, their crops here, they are mature cotton woods. We'd be able to bury them within that right-of-way as we're disposing of the soil that's in that area. The recommendation of the Road Department is that we vacate that half-mile of 260th Street from Jasper Avenue east to the center of the section.
Anyone to be heard for or against on 260th?
My name is Steve French, and I own the property to the north there. What was said about getting into, on the, on the east side, getting into that field, he was going to leave on 260th.
We got to, we got to cut it a little bit so that you can get in the field entrance there, it's just east of that section line.
Will that ditch be filled in and made to set a fence in?
On the, on the east side, we haven't planned to fill in the ditch, we don't have an easy burrow site there. It's not like we got that corner and that pile of dirt we had talked about and got rid of, Steve, so.
Yeah, okay. If I wanted to go in there.
If you want to go in and do that, we'll stake center line for you, you'd be able to obliterate that road on that east side.
Okay.
It would be our intention that you have the full ability to make that farm available again. I don't think there's any utilities in there.
Oh, underground?
Yeah.
Yeah, probably not. All right. Sounds good.
You're in support then of the.
Yeah, go get those trees and get that all put up on the other side, that'd be, that'd be good.
And, and that was our intention, because the, getting rid of that snow trap is, is a big one for us, and it's, it's worth the extra labor to get rid of those trees to make that happen for us, so.
There should almost be incentives to destroy all the cottonwood trees.
Well, considering how much fluff they put up in the spring, yeah.
Last week, it was like snow on the ground, so.
Yeah, yeah, I, I saw quite a bit of that. I don't know if there were any other comments?
No one else on 260th, we'll move on to the next one then, Mark.
This next one is the vacation of the triangle that you see here that is shaded. We relocate. We relocated the two hundred and eightieth street intersection. We did that project two years ago, if you recall, and moved the intersection over here to where it lines up with two eightieth westbound. This intersection here had limited sight distance, less than three hundred and fifty feet around the curve. The area residents received that to be a hazard to them. The Hunt family donated all the right of way that we needed here for the construction of this project. It was our intention that when the project was completed, we would keep the road right of way necessary to maintain our road into the future and that we would turn back the other ground and the old road right of way at the completion. Thirty-three feet of the road right of way is going to be vacated to the property owner to the north. The triangle and thirty-three feet of the old right of way would go back to the Hunts. We're only keeping that, we, we needed the borrow from this area to construct the roadway. That's why we initially requested a donation of the land that included, it encompasses roughly two, a little over two acres.
So, how many feet did that intersection move? You said you had three hundred and fifty foot.
It moved over four hundred feet to the south.
Okay.
And now we have well over seven hundred feet of stop, stopping sight distance there. We laid back that southwest facing hill, I don't know if you noticed that here last year, to further improve the sight distance of that intersection. It did require us to keep an additional ten feet of right of way, but it, it really opens up that intersection now regardless of driving a truck, farm equipment, or semi tractor, so. I mean, to us, this is a big safety improvement. This project was approached, we were approached by the property owners. And, and it's one where I think we've really made substantial improvements to that intersection that could potentially save lives, so.
Anyone to be heard on two hundred and eightieth for or against?
I'm Tom Jordaning, the landowner of the north side of that twenty-four seventy-seven old highway one forty-one. I'm in favor of vacating that, that piece of road. I do have two, two questions or concerns. Is that, or has that been re-surveyed yet?
It has been surveyed, yes.
It has? So, there are, there are pins and, and.
The pins are not in yet, but they will be placed.
Okay, so at some point, when I, or if I choose to put a fence, I follow the pins and?
We will have pins out there for use if you can fence it, yes.
Okay, very good, very good. The other thing I would ask really goes down to, to Iowa law. And, and correct me if, if I'm misspoken here. But according to Code of Iowa, section three oh six point one nine two A, shall pay to the owner the sum of twenty dollars for every lineal foot of additional length of driveway located on the owner's property. This payment shall represent just compensation to the property owner for the additional driveway maintenance caused by reason of the highway or road project, in quote. Do I qualify?
You would if you wish to request that. We would go out and measure the additional driveway length, pay that twenty dollars.
I, I would, I would make a notice of claim on that. I, I have measured it, but I'll go with what the official.
What did you come up with?
Seventy-five feet.
Okay.
I actually had it a tad longer, but I'm, I, I wanted to make sure I was within my, my right. So, my, my claim is for fifteen hundred dollars. And that's.
Thank you.
There for you, Mr. Nara.
And, and that is, that is a fair damage in the case of this extension.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That is part of what this hearing is about, is determining fair damages on this. This really closes the book on this project at the point in time where we do that. We would make out a claim to pay him the fifteen hundred dollars damages.
I think my driveway was affected, too. I'll have to get you a measurement.
We don't get any bonus, though, for shortening Hunts driveway. That was just part of the service.
All right, so.
Were there any other comments on that, this one, before I sit down?
Let's move on to the next one, Mark.
Frankly, we should've caught that, but it's one of those things that, that I had honestly forgotten about. So, I'm glad you brought it up today. Our next one is a portion of one hundred and fiftieth street. And it lies east of Dallas Avenue and west of the bend in Correctionville Road. There is a single acreage here at this location. This road is dirt between the two, between the two roads there. There's really no, it, it's, it's, it's a shortcut road. We sometimes snack, stack snow there in the winter. There's really no good reason ever road right of way there. In twenty fourteen, twenty sixteen, twenty eighteen, we had to do some pretty extensive work because of erosion that occurred out there. This land would be better vacated and put back in the hands of the property owners so that they can farm it as they choose and fence down the middle. It's, it's a remnant of an old road that was never improved. I received an email from the property owner of the acreage. Dear Mr. Nara and Woodbury County Board of Supervisors, my wife Emily and I are in favor of vacating one hundred and fiftieth street that runs adjacent to our property at seventy-seven eleven Correctionville Road. Thank you, Gary Schoenberger.
Anyone else to be heard on one hundred and fiftieth for or against?
I'm right to the.
Go ahead and state your name and everything.
Steve Merla. I'm right to the south of the, of the road there. And it doesn't matter to me whether you vacated it or not. I don't use it. Pulled kids out of there over the years a lot. That's about a lot of them.
It is one of the Schoenberger's irritations, too, kids going back there and playing and getting stuck.
Before cell phones, it was two, three o'clock in the morning, come get, pull me out of there. People you don't know, you know, but that, but that's also used as a dump. And then even the county cleans it up.
Yeah, we have had different times where we have had to go in there and.
Now, if you vacate it, who cleans up?
Well, we would block off both ends. And then you guys would be free to push in your banks and, and begin to farm it and fence it. You know, the west end is fairly flat. I'd run a fence and put gates in across there as fast as the board takes action on this. And then you, at your leisure, you could do whatever you wanted with the rest of the land.
Yeah, yeah.
We're, we're going to take and put some dirt at the base stand just to bank that up. We're also going to put signs across there. We'll put our chaperones through where you used to drive through so that we make it as inaccessible as we can for folks. They quickly get the idea that there's no longer a road there, so.
Yeah, yeah, there'd been a lot of dumping there, just.
And, and that's what happens with all of these old roads. Because you get down over the hill just east of that, or just west of that acreage. And you can't see anything either direction here, so.
Yeah.
He makes, he makes a very good point. That's one of the other reasons we are, we would be very pleased to see this road built.
Yeah, it just so gets blocked off right away.
Yeah.
They dump right on the, right along the, by Dallas and just a little ways up. Hundred and fiftieth off of Dallas, so that's their favorite on my side.
Do you actually need that west end as a field entrance?
No.
So, what, what we'll do is we'll just dig out that road embankment through there, too, so that they would have a plan with their basic.
So, if they try to drive in there to dump something, they get a surprise.
Right. Well, you know, we'll have our, our double arrow sign up for one hundred and fiftieth coming east. We may also, I think there's a stop sign there already, isn't there?
Yeah.
Coming up in the west, so. We have the big double arrow sign there. And then we'll take out the culvert and road embankment so that we just have an open ditch across there in the future. We would do that very quickly once the board renders a decision on whether or not to close this segment.
Then now is that closed permanently? Like just say fifty years down the road?
It's your land after that.
Let's just say fifty years, someone wants to build a house there.
They can't, you know, because the, the roads, the county board's interest in that road, once they vacate it, you, that deed, or that, that vacation of the easement's recorded. The easement no longer exists, so somebody can't just come and say they want to build back there. I mean, that would be irrelevant.
I didn't know the easement went away completely, too.
Yes, it does.
Oh, really?
The only thing that remains would be easements of record. If there was a power line going along there, the power line would still have the authority to access that at any time. When you, when we do pass the final resolution, the resolution says that subject to easements of record. So, if you had a fiber optic line or electrical line or some other utility through there, they still have their easement. But the underlying use of the land, it's no longer road easement, it's now private property.
So, if we ever want it back, we gotta buy it?
You would have to buy it, yes.
Okay. Yeah, that's the one.
Keep hearing about all these free dump sites after we close them. Man, nice. Next one then, Mark?
You know, it, it's amazing how many people will take tires, old TVs and that. We'll spend a hundred dollars hauling it to the landfill between man, machine, and paying the tipping fees that would've cost them twenty bucks if they had taken it in themselves. Yeah, it's, it's one of our frustrations. And he points out correctly, that one is another of our problems.
So, just make sure no one else on one fiftieth. All right, let's move on to the next.
Getting better at this with practice. Our final road vacation is Garner Avenue. This one has been closed but never vacated. We have Deer Run Trail up here, that's County Road D fifty-four. This is west of Climbing Hill on Garner.
Is that a house right on it?
It's, it's actually a farm building. I can zoom in on that area again if you would like me to.
Okay.
I, I don't believe that there's a house on this property. I think it's. I gotta see where I'm at.
Is it right? I guess.
It's one owner that has this full mile and a half of road. They're basically using it as a farm lane. They have a large cattle operation that's housed at this facility. Again, as far as I know, there is, I don't, I don't think there's a residence there.
No problem.
Oh, there you are.
Okay, well, I guess we'll just go ahead and comment on this if it's already been.
But it's, it's our recommendation, we, we vacate the full.
It's been vacated for years.
Well, it's been closed, so, but not vacated.
But not vacated.
I mean, it has been vacated.
Randy, come up. Just so you're on the microphone and on record, that's who you are.
Yeah, I'm in favor of that land, that road to, through all our property. And we've been using it, you know, back and forth. But it's, nobody wants to go across. Plus, that bridge down there is absolutely terrible. We go through, fell through it a couple times.
Go ahead and give your name real quick for the record.
Randy Martin, Johnny Martin Farms.
All right, well, that's all we need.
Yeah, thank you.
You bet. And any other comments on any other part of the public hearings? Seeing none, I'll move, public hearings be closed? Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Radig, second by Ung, to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Passes four to zero, and then, do we move each one?
Yes, each one should be moved separately.
So, I will move the permanent closure and vacation of one hundred and forty-fifth portions that were brought up today.
Second.
Motion by Radig, second by Ung, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Anyone oppose? Passes four to zero.
Just so the board knows, these will come back with a final action that will be recorded in the county recorder's office. We'll probably bring those to you next week.
Those can go on the consent, can't they? Or is that?
I think they could.
What's that?
The, the final vacation resolutions, each individual resolution that goes along with that and quitclaim need could go on the consent agenda, I think.
I'll move the Sydney Avenue at the bridge as discussed.
Both north and south of the existing bridge.
Well, that was, Sydney Avenue was the one we discussed where north of it, he was gonna make that act.
But we want to close it at the north end of the bridge and at the south end of the bridge. Because we got two, we had proposed to close it at the south end of the bridge, so. We need to clarify that we're closing both ends of the bridge and we would maintain the rest of the road as dead end easement.
So, that's how I moved it.
Second.
All right, motion by Radig, second by Ung, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Passes four to zero. I'll move the recommended closure on two sixtieth.
With, with the provision that, that vacation will be effective upon completion of, of obliterating that road and removing the snow trap in that area. And that as damages, the county is doing that work at no cost to the landowner.
Second.
That'll be in that final vacation order when we bring that back for your approval.
Sounds good. Motion by Radig, second by Ung, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Passes four to zero. I'll move the two eightieth intersection triangle.
With the inclusion of the fifteen hundred dollars damages to be payable to the property owner for extension of their driveway.
Yes, fifteen to two thousand or whatever it was. Measured by.
We will, it will be based on the final measurements of the.
Yeah, send Mike out there, we'll figure it out.
Take code twenty bucks a foot, so.
All righty, so motion by Radig, second by Ung, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Passes four to zero. I'll move the one hundred and fiftieth street recommended closure.
Second.
Vacation, I mean. Motion by Radig, second by Ung, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Passes four to zero. I'll move the recommended Garner Avenue vacation.
Second.
Motion by Radig, second by Ung, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Passes four to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, so we'll move on to the committee meetings.
I had a Sioux on District Health meeting. One item brought up was that a change in tanning inspections in Woodbury County. I'm sure of great interest to all of you.
Is this like leather tanning or is this tanning booths?
Tanning booths. There was a 2080 agreement with the state. They were covering those, but they have not pursued funding for that. So, the local district is able to enact its own inspections and its own fees. And they are looking at that and possibly serving the surrounding counties that are in that region that is affected because we're best positioned to do that.
Marty, you're rocky?
Motion.
I had none. Moving on to citizen concerns. Moving on to board concerns. Matthew?
Rocky.
I got a few. One, can we get, is there a way to kind of just get an idea of when a good time to have a a meeting with all the department heads? Is there, again, I don't want to like step on vacation toes and just worthy an email, is that? Okay.
Discussion be like CIP or?
Just.
Future Woodbury County or projects?
Just kind of a, just general discussion, kind of like the quarterly meetings before, but semi-annual maybe in this case. I just hate to do one in the middle of June and everyone's gone, you know? I don't know, I'll, I'll send out an email, I guess if that's probably best, I don't know. All right, and then money raised for the sheriffs, the deputy reserve fund, I think it's seventy-one hundred. Was that the email, the amount? Yeah. Seventy-one hundred. Yeah, 7,100, I think is what it was, so. Uh, our team, I think, won, I'm sure. Did you get the closest to the pin prize? Somebody cheated then, so I'm sorry. The other thing, I was invited to the president's deal in Council Bluffs today, and I had gone, but then the flight ended up two hours later, so I would've been getting here just now if I had gone. But they made an announcement on the E-15 being used year-round, and that should be another boost to the farm economy here, so good news. And that was all I had, so, meeting adjourned.
How did the Air Force One get delayed?
I got, they were just delayed and leaving, I don't know. They announced.